Go ahead and bring our regular session meeting to order at this time. Meeting for October 19th, 2016. And if everyone could please either silence or turn off your cell phones and please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, any changes to today's agenda?
We have deleted the solar E D P reminder consideration.
Okay. So, 10:00 AM, our first item is public comment. Do you have any public comment today? Our next timed items at 10:10 with our auditors, so we'll go ahead and start with some of our other business. I don't know, Commissioner, if you want to talk about Lake County E S D funding first?
Sure, and that is, it's not Lake County E S D funding, this is Lake County Mentor Program.
Right.
Lake County Mentor, we did have an E S D update yesterday, and then we went into Kathy Miles with, and Heather Gibson with the Mentor Program. They have a request come before the board for $5,000 for their budget this year within our budget year. The request is for operations with the Mentor Program. Some of their grants have not come through. They do have some contingencies, some carryover dollars. The scenario that they took before us, even if we're able to give the $5,000, they'll still use up almost half of their $44,000 carryforward funds. So, I have a visit with our budget officer, and I do believe that we're very capable of being able to bring these funds together. It might be through multiple departments within the county. So at this time, I'll make a motion to award $5,000 to Lake County Mentor Program, and we will determine which funds they come from as we work with our budget officer.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the moving of funds to be determined later to the Lake County Mentor Program. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Dave Knowles put together a new solar pilot application draft form.
Yeah, so yesterday, this was in draft form brought to us. I brought forward yesterday, and this is a form for as people, solar projects come in for payment lieu tax request, just a check and balance sheet. I had brought forward yesterday that it needs to have on there, just how they acquired a road access permit. He has added that, but I do believe that we need to add this a little bit more. Have you acquired a road access permit that's needed, just add that if needed. So I'll move to approve that with that.
Well, seconded. It's been moved and segmented to approve the new Lake County Form for Pilot Program Payment Lieu of Tax Application requests as presented with the scrutiny. Any other discussion?
I guess legal counsel, you don't see no problems with the view?
No.
Should ask him if he really.
It is pretty straightforward, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next will be our GAVIAN basket posts. Kevin? We discussed it yesterday. You want to just?
GAVIAN baskets for Dog Lake Road Project. A C F out of Portland was the low bid. Total coming to $32,312.64.
What was that figure again?
There was an adjustment yesterday made because of not renting a pneumatic tool that they were providing.
Great.
And so, Mr. Bailey, you obviously reviewed this, and this follows our contract review board rules?
Yes, the department sent it to me last week, I reviewed it, there weren't any problems.
And our road superintendent's recommending an award to this company?
To this low bid, yes.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept the bid from A C F West Incorporated for GAVIAN purchase, the total being $32,312.64.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the award to A C F as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Still got time? Denise, you want to start with you?
Sure. So, my four items, as we discussed yesterday, stem from our recent transit review. They are in order for us to be in compliance for the F T A, Federal Transit Association monies that we received. The first one, in the past, you guys have given me permission to sign documents such as our quarterly reports, grant application, those kind of things. They needed it in resolution form, so that's what this resolution is.
It's over taking one at a time, I believe.
Yeah, this is just, this is our own resolution.
Only resolution.
Then, Mr. Bailey, credit.
Yeah, Mr. Bailey, credit. So Denise, with the special transportation, what's roughly the amount of dollars that come into Lake County, all operators?
Um, this by name, we're looking at about $350,000 for purchase of our vehicles.
That is great.
So, along that same line, what might we have been receiving a number of years back, like when you took over?
We actually were not receiving our monies. We were, they were holding our money, waiting for us to do reporting. But at that point in time, we were only receiving entitlement dollars of $8,000 providing.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your work. I'll move to approve Resolution Number 16-10-19 in the matter of Lake County authorizing transit manager, transit manager signing it for.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve Resolution Number 16-10-19 in the matter of Lake County authorizing transit manager, transit manager signing it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I think we're close enough. We're ahead. Our 10:10 items, our plotted exit interview, and J are here. Is Jay going to be here too?
Thank you, Jay, just had to step out. We'll come back to you in a minute. Kara.
And you want to move up here, Sydney?
Hold my breath.
Good morning, Entrepreneur Group, this is Dory.
Hi, Dory, this is Denise from the Lake County Commissioner's Office. Is Kara available?
Yes, just a minute, please.
Thank you.
This is Kara.
Hi, Kara. So we've got you on at 10:10 to discuss the exit interview and the draft management letter that the Commissioner, and I think everybody has a copy in front of them. So we'll turn it over to you to lead us through.
Okay, well, thank you for having me. I have the draft management letter to present, and it is just a draft. We have a few things open, a few things that we're still working on. So, it is just a draft. So we were there in Lake County last week auditing, and it went pretty smoothly, which is nice. The first point that we have on the management letter is internal control policies and procedures. This is a comment we make every year due to the fact that the same person can write and create checks and print them and also sign them. So that is an area of concern for us that we remind you every year, and we do know that there are other oversight procedures happening, and that's great to see, but we do remind you every year just in case personnel changes that you reaffect that person's duties. So that is that point. The next point is payroll. Um, let's see. The employee handbook is 10 years old. We noted that last year, we just happened to look at it and noticed it was pretty old, but we do know that it's in progress, so I may just remove that one eventually, but I left it on for this point. The next point is regarding census data. This is a new test that we performed due to the changes in GAZB 68. We took a sample of employees, and we actually had to pull their employee files. We had to look at their PERS data on the PERS website, and we looked at their PERS data on your iCity software that the county has. Of the nine employees that we looked at, there were five differences between what the PERS system had and what the iCity system had for their salaries. And I believe this is still kind of being looked at, see if we can reconcile those differences or not, so it is kind of an open item. There was one instance that the birthday did not match the employee's personnel file. It was inputted backwards, so it didn't match what was in PERS or the county's software from what their personnel file had.
So Kara, is that why people are saying, "This is Commissioner Sheldon, I'm older than dirt"? I'm 52 and 25.
We didn't look at you.
She said, "You're not worth looking at."
Yeah, well, that's not true. Yeah, so it was kind of surprising to see, we've been looking at this all year and we haven't had any issues. So that is something that I believe Mickey and Jay were going to look into and see what the differences were. Any questions so far?
No, I, Jay, do you want to talk about ideas we have right now to explain that discrepancy?
We don't know yet. So Kara, this is Brad Winters. So this is the first time you've tucked the lumps on the PERS, and I know you do other entities that have PERS. Is there similar things going on in any other?
No, we have not seen errors in what the PERS system has and what their software has. This was the first time this year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
We are working on figuring out what happened.
Sure. Jay and I have already visited some.
Okay. Okay, under capital assets, the software that the county uses is pretty cumbersome and difficult to test because not everything can be put in there. We noted this last year, maybe looking into a different software, and I know there has been talk about that. The main point under capital assets is that we weren't able to test it while we were there during fieldwork, and that just adds another layer of difficulty when we have to do it in our office. It's much easier to test when we're there in the field and we can pull reports directly and whatnot. So, that was an issue this year, and I believe it wasn't available to us last year either when we were there for fieldwork. So we asked that you maybe work on that. The last point is road cost. So, when we were there, Debbie was looking at costs allocated to the Hartmount project, and we noted that not all of the employees' time in the vehicle to and from the site were reported to the project. Since then, we've gotten some new reports from the road department that Debbie hasn't been able to fully reconcile yet. It was different from the reports that we got when we were there for fieldwork last week, and she doesn't feel like everything's cleared up yet, and we're in the field auditing this week, so hopefully on Friday she can get back to it, and we can clear up this issue. If it is an issue, if it's not an issue, which is why this was just a draft, all the testing is completely done. So, that may remain on the management letter, it may be removed once we figure out what reports Christie has sent, and see if it clears up the issue we have. Any questions about that one?
No. Do you have any question, Chris?
No, I sent Debbie all the.
Yeah.
Yeah, she has gotten several emails between Ann and Christie. So on the last page, I just put the open items. It's not necessarily everything we're waiting on the county court something that we just weren't able to fully work through. One being the road cost testing, the landfill, capital assets, and payroll liabilities. So it's, the audit isn't complete at this point, but it is, the majority is done. So, I just wanted, we would like to let you guys know where we are when we leave, so those were the open items that have to complete.
The landfill item is the cost to close the existing cell. We have to set aside dollars every year to meet that obligation, and that cost that we're using may be outdated, so we just want to make sure that we have the most recent cost estimate for closure.
Where did that cost come from, what we have?
So it came from a D E Q, you know, it might have started out from an engineering estimate way back when, and then D E Q has a formula that they add to it that has inflation factors and years of service.
Right now, we're going through, we have Markinger Consulting doing that, we're going to have an engineer to add on top of that, so we will have all that absolutely. We're going towards a small landfill exemption right now. So all that will definitely be updated, and the dollars for the landfill closures are a recommendation from D E Q that it will take by our landfill closure plan. So they.
So are there any dollars right now that they can, because that's what they want, they want to see? And the person that I was sent to that has been a reporter, is retired, and so they sent me to another person, and that person is trying to figure out what they're supposed to do.
Well, we've been putting, I think, the amount, correct me if I'm wrong, in 25 or some thousand per year. We have a little over $600,000 in our landfill closure, and so it's all a formula for one of your.
And that was given to them when they were here, that we sent over to D E Q.
So.
So I don't know if we.
I am very comfortable with our landfill and the direction we're going in the documentation, and we're just going to another level right now, so other information they need, we'll go give them.
Yeah, it's just a liability note in the narrative of the audits, it's just kind of nitpicky, but it is something that's there, and the date they have on that estimate is kind of old, so they're just curious if there's new information or a new estimate. We know the estimate is a little bit flawed in some ways because we're closing as we operate. So, there are some things with this accounting process, an audit process, that is just that.
Well, if we receive a small landfill exemption and we do the closure, we will be fine.
And then we have to continue to put money away for the closure of the new landfill, so it's just ongoing savings.
Kara, do you have anything else on those items, now that you read this description? You want to add?
I don't. And it's possible that we got a document after I had drafted this, because I did it right after lunch, and then we were there for another few hours.
Okay.
And I don't know if we did get updated document, or if it was still the old numbers. But regardless, it's not booked yet, so that is something, if we do have the numbers, we need to book it on for the financial statement purposes.
Great.
But it is just a simple tree to make.
Very good.
Okay, well, that's all I had. I left in a progress bill and a management representation letter that herself and Jay signed for us, and we just asked for that to mail back after it's signed. We'll carry on on our end.
Thank you, Kara.
Okay, thank you guys very much. If you have any questions further on, don't hesitate to call or email me.
Thanks, Kara.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Bye.
I guess it's true, you know, every year, the audit process, it's what it is, it helps fine tune our process, our procedures, just looks at our practices as well, so it's a really good review tool to use, and I feel like this might be one of the simplest corrective things we've seen in years. So, it was a really good audit, in my opinion, went really soon, so thank you to everybody for the work that goes into it, since I know it's during the end times, so.
Thank you to all of you.
The one thing that come across here that we need to find out, and they talk about our software and what we have, you know, we need to know, do we need to come to another level for sure, what the recommendations would be, is the software part of the PERS issue, you know? The reason why I ask her that question is, is I think we do a very good job, but there might be something that our software or our documentation doesn't flow with PERS or something, so I'm interested, as you mentioned, software and other things, where we're at, are we at that level that we need to?
We're just talking about software for the fixed assets tracking. It's really a simple thing, and we thought maybe just try and do that ourselves with an Excel spreadsheet, and we could probably do that at this point. We don't have that many assets that it wouldn't be easy to manage. The software that we have is really cumbersome and not adaptive. We can't input any new construction into it, no infrastructure. All we can do is add mobile equipment and equipment.
So when did we get that software?
It was like 2004, I think.
It was when GAZB 34 was implemented, and we had to start booking infrastructure and fixed assets.
So that company came out, and they used the platform Alpha Five spreadsheet or database program, and they programmed in the functionality of the depreciation and, you know, the things that we needed. But it's not a program that we can use and modify and understand and add to. I mean, they built it so that they would have to come out every several years and do a complete reassessment of our properties, and then they would make those changes, and it's a big cost, and our insurance company already does that, and so this seems like, it's frustrating to work on fixed assets because there's no real value except the reporting, you know? So it feels like we're putting a lot of effort and money into something.
It all started back with GAZB 34, and have been in compliance, and that's what started this whole.
Yeah, and so we have to comply with those reporting requirements, but, yeah.
So the dilemma is looking at the cost of the software and the cost of the resource to the public benefit, which, like Jay's saying, there's no.
There's no benefit.
There isn't. It's just as an audit process, modified accrual and those things. So we're trying to figure out ways to solve the issue at the least cost possible.
An easy way to solve it would be to add the module to our to VADAM, which they have a module, but I mean, it's a huge cost.
Very expensive.
And I can't just buy that at all.
So someday you'll come back to this with the recommendation that makes sense.
Yeah.
Or we'll do it in Excel.
We have a couple things we're looking at. If nothing satisfies what we're, you know, is simple economical, then we're going to just do this with our spreadsheets.
If we do this through Excel or whatever, I mean, there's so many people, that's fluid for them to do, but that would be acceptable to the auditor.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's what, you know, we all live and breathe that, so it kind of totally makes sense, I think that may be where we're headed.
Very good. Well, thanks again to all of you that have been heavily involved in this process, all the work you put into it, and the fact that each and every year, it seems like we have a better and better audit. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to our next set of agenda items. There's Denise, and Denise, I have down transit code, public transit code of ethics and conflict.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, conflict of interest policy.
So, this is one of three policies that we need to have in place for our federal transit funding. It was reviewed by legal counsel. All of these have been reviewed by legal counsel.
Great.
I just added that Denise and I went back and forth through several drafts of these policies, some more than others, to reach the final form that made sense and still complied with the requirements.
So, we, I'll make a motion to accept the code of ethics and conflict of interest policy as presented.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept the code of ethics and conflict of interest policy as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next one is the zero tolerance policy. This is related to drivers driving our vehicles that were purchased with federal monies. Each, I guess I need to add for the record, that each one of our providers will also need to put these same policies in place. We did have an option of having a one-time pass opportunity or a zero tolerance opportunity for our policies. No other agency reviews anything about zero tolerance, so that's why.
So Denise, I didn't ask you yesterday, but you just mentioned that the providers will have to have this in place as well. Does that carry on to suggest that no funds will be distributed to those providers until they have this policy in place?
Okay. We can definitely put that into place. It's taken a few months to get this going anyway. I would give them a quarter.
Right. A reasonable timeframe does not just tell them they need to have it in place, but actually give them a prompt date and at that time.
I would strongly advise that.
Okay, well, that's not part of the policy, but.
Yeah, well, I don't know that we even really have a choice. We can give them a timeframe for them to get it in, but if they don't have these in place, the state will not give them money out there. So I think the recommendation by us would be to, for all the providers, have this done within 30 days.
Okay.
At that.
Okay.
You know, if they're in jeopardy of losing their funds if they don't do this, the way I understand it from the state level. So I'll move to approve the zero tolerance drug and alcohol testing policy as presented.
I'll second it? I'll ask Mr. Bailey, I know Denise talked to you about this, but there isn't anything else that we need to consider today on this?
No, well, we've talked about all of these policies, and this one, this brings us into compliance, and the requirement that the provider also have a similar policy makes them eligible for the law. We can't have a provider who doesn't have this policy, and I think the verdict that I'm giving is more than reasonable, it's simply a notice, really.
So it's been moved and segmented to accept the zero tolerance drug and alcohol testing policy as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And the last one deals with our procurement purchases, such as our bus barn and our vehicles. This also is one of those requirements from the F T A.
I'll move to accept the Lake County Public Transit Procurement Manual as presented.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept the Lake County Public Transit Procurement Manual. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting minutes, we have one set, right Denise?
One set. It's for October 5th.
We do, and I have one change that Denise has put in. And a lot of these minutes were based, we had a lot of discussion about the nuisance slash code enforcement. When we left that meeting, or that part of our meeting, Commissioner Kissner said that he would meet with. When we left that meeting, our, that part of our meeting, Commissioner Kissner said that he would meet with Darwin and our HR person and bring something back to us. I wanted to make sure that was in there. And so with that added in there, I move to approve October fifth minutes as presented.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the minutes of October fifth, 2016, as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So yesterday, we had department updates. We have some department folks here. So I will give a minute or two of opportunity if there's any other department updates anyone would like to make during the session. Hearing then, we do raise on updates. So as far as I know, that concludes all of our regular open session.
Was there any legal?
Yes. I'll see if there's any other open session legal updates. It's not on the agenda.
No, we have one for executive session, which is under subsection H.
Okay. Okay. So at this time, we will go out of regular session. And we'll be going into executive session at ten thirty-one. Those remaining will be legal counsel, our administrative assistant, the two commissioners, Dave Byrne, our public works, or not our public works, but.
Property and facilities.
Property and facilities manager and the press, Press's Gag, so.